Where are we with the 100 resilient cities? So Christine Morris, Chief Resilience Officer, will give an update. We also have the Honorable Maurice Jones, the Secretary of the Commonwealth, who will be here to discuss an exciting grant that the state has chosen the region to be the representative for. After around council interest, Brian will give us a recap of the 2015 General Assembly Session, which, kudos to Brian, and which I believe we had a very successful session. There was a request a couple of weeks ago for an update on the RVI program, so Darrell Pritidin will give us that update. I know that there were some ordinances for Talbot Falls. We left a placehold there for the city attorney to provide some guidance, and we have one real estate matter under closed session. So Mayor, and I also know that everybody received a letter from the sheriff this past Saturday. I do value the relationship with the sheriff, and he's been a very good partner. We talk regularly, as a matter of fact, we talked this morning. So if it's the will of the council for the sheriff to come and talk about his state of the jail, or any constitutional officer to come, then that would be, I will schedule that with the council.
I like the sheriff, he's a good guy. But I've been on council since 1992, and even when the jail was crumbling down around Napkin, they started again. Been a member of the council since 1992, and even when the jail was crumbling down around our ears before the city put about $13 million in it to renovate it, we've never had the sheriff to address the council. If it was something that had to do with construction, it was always somebody from the city manager staff. I think we've been pretty straightforward as far as the sheriff is concerned. Any money that came, we did everything we can do to accommodate the deputies and things of that nature. So I really don't see a need, you know, for the sheriff to come in and address us in an informal session. I don't see the need for it.
Certainly an update of what's going on, or they wouldn't hurt.
I'm not exactly sure what the sheriff really wants to say. If it really is just about the capital needs of the jail, that's the conversation he needs to have with you for you to, you know, and then I think to identify, see what the priorities are, those types of things, and then bring something to us. If the sheriff really is intent on coming in here to make a presentation, then, you know, maybe Mark Schu and I can meet with him, and then I'll come back and talk to the council about whether or not we need to do that or not. I don't, I'm like Paul, I don't remember this very, it hasn't been very often over time that the constitutional officers have actually come in here, but if it's pressing enough, I mean, we'll talk about it. All right. Paul, do you have any council concerns? I see the secretary is here, but Barkley, do you have any council concerns?
I know Terry and I have been noticing, been talking to some people in the West Belvedere area. We are putting the dredging in.
Yes.
We need to assure them they're having a meeting, I guess, with some Norfolk folks and...
Next Thursday.
Right, okay. You'll have somebody there to reassure them. The other thing is, are we still moving along with the downtown folks about the small business incubator space? We're gonna get a report on that at some point.
I'll talk to Truitt to see where he is.
Okay, but where are we?
We're ready for him.
I think it's probably timely just to get some sort of breathing, even if it wasn't writing.
Sure.
He's got some, he's got all the standards he's got.
Whatever. No, I don't know. I think we ought to get some understanding of what's happening.
I'm fine.
Okay, that's all I got.
I'll be interested.
Maybe anything.
Okay. So Mayor, I will turn it over to Christine. Is she with me? Okay, great. And then she'll introduce Maurice also. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. We have members of the council. It's an honor to come and brief you about what we've been doing on the 100 resilient cities, and then to have the secretary talk about this incredible opportunity that the state has brought to the region. So I'm gonna be very brief and turn it over to Secretary Jones. So we received the 100 resilient cities grant back in December of 2013. We were one of 33 cities then. We are now one of 67 cities, and additional 34 cities were named last December. And you can see there are all over the world lots of coastal communities like ours, but also lots of communities that are landlocked. So there are a lot of interesting resilience challenges that are being addressed through this process. So resilience, from the Rockefeller Foundation's perspective, this is their definition and the one that we're using as part of the resilience challenge that we have. And it's really the capacity to adapt, to grow, and hopefully to thrive in the face of change, and climate change or any other kind of change. Stress and shocks, and they're very deliberate about saying that change is both, can be from a shock, like an earthquake, but it can be from stresses that are ongoing and challenge a community. And so some of the shocks that have been surfaced are here on the column, earthquakes, wildfires, flooding, that have, you know, surfaced across the network, but also the chronic stresses of water scarcity, affordable housing, poor air quality, high unemployment. And so we've been looking at both those types of items through this process. And in 2014, prior to my becoming the Chief Resilience Officer, the city hosted a kickoff community workshop to begin to surface these, what are our hazards, what are our vulnerabilities? And no surprise, flooding and coastal storms, 86% of the people who participated, that was their number one issue. But also economic diversity and vibrancy, little concern that we have so much of our gross regional product coming from federal funds, and that that really does give us some lack of control over our future. And then I'll call them issues arising from income inequality. So these are homelessness and lack of access to high-quality education and health care and economic opportunities. And so through the last six months, we have been working on those three areas. We've collapsed them into coastal resilience, economic resilience, and neighborhood resilience. We have work groups and a steering committee that are looking at these issues. And we've moved now into the second phase of the grant, in which we do a little bit of a deeper dive into some of the issues that we think we have. And so over the next couple of months, we will be doing some work in coastal resilience. We're gonna be pioneering the first resilient land use code, where the 100 resilient cities is bringing together four cities with experts and trying to understand, with your comprehensive plan, joined with your land use code, how do you drive resilience around economic vitality, around coastal resilience, and around high-quality neighborhood vibrancy? And we need to start reimagining structures and infrastructures in the rising sea environment. We started to do that with the ULI Fort Norfolk Technical Resilience Panel. We are gonna be working with the Dutch Embassy and the Planning District Commission to do a Dutch dialogue. And these are really opportunities to reimagine, what does a community look like, what does a built environment look like in the future, especially with issues of sea level rise, but also to make sure that you have that vibrancy in neighborhood and that economic resilience. With respect to economic resilience, we really need to reframe the debate. We are a globally important region, we're a globally important city, and we need to talk and understand more fully, what is the cost of not operating effectively in this region? What's the global security cost? What's the international trade cost? And how do we begin to talk about the cost of not mitigating versus the cost of mitigating? We've been working on trying to impact the flooding, the impact of flooding on insurance rates. We've been working with the planning department around the community rating systems, and can we find ways in which we can improve our score so that our flooding insurance rates will decrease over time? And then we're gonna be working with the Rockefeller Foundation on creating a baseline economic analysis to inform the city's overall strategy. We'll be working with Peter and his department to begin to surface exactly what is growing in the city, what is contracting in the city, where our opportunities lie, and how should we think about seizing those over time? And then with respect to neighborhood resilience, we are working hard to identify those things that build neighborhood cohesion on the neighbors building neighborhoods model. One of the things that surfaced very readily after Katrina and after Sandy is that those communities that had strong social cohesion factors, where neighbors helped neighbors, bounced back much faster than other communities, and that was when you held for things like higher insurance rates or higher levels of insurance, higher investments from federal or state, even so, social cohesion was the factor that made a community bounce back faster. And so now we have this wonderful opportunity that the secretary's gonna talk about. It's a $1 billion federal grant program. It's designed to build resilience. The Commonwealth is the applicant, they'll be applying for the region, and we hope that Hampton Roads will be able to pilot resilience strategies for the state through this opportunity. And we are looking to pilot our areas, our focus areas, solutions to our focus areas with these resources. So I'm gonna let the secretary talk a little bit more about this great program.
Mr. Secretary, it's an honor to have you here.
I'm just a country boy, you know that, Mr. Mayor. This is home for me. I'm just, you gave me a chance to get home early.
It's not very often that we have a member of the governor's cabinet here.
Well, you're kind.
When they come, they generally bring money. But you are, but since you're such a good friend, we'll excuse you from that for the time.
Well, I, let me just say on that latter point, I'm not bringing money this time, although I may be with you. Let me just say it's, you know, this is home, it's nice to be home, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, all members of the council for letting me talk about what is a great opportunity. There are other opportunities that we're working on together as well, but today I just wanna talk about this one. This is a competition that HUD is administering it right now, and it's a billion-dollar grant. It is designed to help, or I should say, invest in innovative approaches around the country with respect to resiliency. And the Commonwealth is competing with Norfolk as the hub, Norfolk and Hampton Roads. We're doing that because we think, one, we know this is a globally important region with one of the largest ports in the country, with the defense assets that we have, with being on the coast as we are. This is a global, regional, important asset, and so we're putting forth what we think is going to get the attention of our national partners. In addition, you've already taken a leadership role. I don't think there's another resiliency officer. There may be, if so, they've copied Norfolk anywhere in the Commonwealth right now, and so I wanna commend you all for taking the early step. I was at HUD, and I was in France, and someone handed, this has been now over a year ago, someone handed me a list of the first pick of the Rockefeller's 100 resilient cities, and there was my hometown. It was, it was a nice proud moment for me. So you're also getting a great deal of notice, not just here, but across the world. So we are, the governor is committed to this, we have imitated you, the governor has chosen now, he's picked a resiliency officer. We have, our Secretary of Public Safety, Brian Moran, is the state's new resiliency officer. In addition to that, the governor has bought back the, what we are now calling the Virginia Climate Change and Resiliency Commission, which was around for a while, was allowed to become dormant, and the governor has revived it. So this is a priority of ours, and we're delighted that we have you all to put forth as the place that is most competitive for the Commonwealth in this competition. It's a two-phase competition. The first phase application is due the 27th of March. I've got some confidence, I don't wanna get overconfident, that we'll move on to the second phase, and the second phase is where the implementation actually is. And the Phase Two application is due in October, with awards right now scheduled to be made in December of this year. And so my, what I simply wanted to do today was to come and tell you that for us, this is very important. We looked at a number of areas in the Commonwealth that we thought we could put forth for this competition, and at the end of the day, this was the area, because of the capacity that you've already built, or that I should take credit for, that we've already built, the priority that you all have already placed on it, the forward thinking that you've already exhibited, and the issues that we're grappling with, and the fact that this is a globally important area, we think we're in good shape to be very competitive in this competition. So we're gonna do everything we can to be good partners with you. We're trying to make sure that we mobilize all of state government behind this application. So my secretary and every secretary has its agencies lined up to be supportive of this application. So hopefully, we'll be bringing back some money, Mr. Mayor, on this one and some other ones. So with that, I wanna thank you for the time to be here.
Well, thank you. I mean, it's really great to hear that they're gonna, that the governor with you will be mobilizing the entire Commonwealth to support this effort. It's gonna need that sort of support. It wasn't until just recent couple of years that the Commonwealth was actually able to focus its attention on the growing, it's a growing awareness of issues revolving around resiliency. Of the first, the first wave of cities that were in Rockefeller Foundation, first 33, there were 11 cities, as I recall, from the United States, and we were one of them, and we were in some pretty good company there as well. So we were proud of that. I think it speaks well for how the administration is, this board thinking about what we're doing about, you know, the current flooding in the city, sea level rise, whatever you wanna call it, I mean, subsidence, but, you know, how we're trying to deal with that, as well as the chronic issues that we have here. So we need your help, we think you're, we think we're a great, you know, example of a community that's trying to deal with this in a proactive way.
You are, no question about it, and, you know, there is sometimes a temptation to think of resiliency in a very, through a very narrow lens, that all we're talking about here is sea level rise. Certainly, we're talking about sea level rise, but you also got neighborhood resiliency, efforts ongoing, those also were attractive to us as we thought about where we should, if you will, put our capital. So again, I wanna thank you all for providing what I think is a great opportunity for the Commonwealth.
Disaster preparedness, as well as the chronic issues.
Yep.
How do you bounce back from significant disasters, as well as the chronic issues that we face? So thank you for taking time.
And don't forget, when we win this, you say, "My homeboy Maurice."
Well, thank you, Mr. Secretary. If you need to leave, we understand.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You want to, you have something else?
Mayor and members of council, we really do appreciate Secretary Jones. I don't know if the city can have a better friend than the secretary. And I would like to also mention Christine has done a great job. It's been a team effort, as you know, from Ron Williams to Brian Pennington to Christine to Jim Reddick to, you know, James Rogers, but, you know, it's just really been almost this, a single focus on trying to be innovative in a group. So we're very appreciative of the support from both the state and the council.
Okay, thanks. Next time this month. Okay, I mean, we've already done council interest, but I'll, if you've got anything you want to cover. Okay. We are moving at warp speed here. I thought that presentation was gonna be long. Mr. Pennington's gonna actually take as long as he typically is.
Are you sure? I'm not. Go ahead.
Counsel, thank you. I am going to try to make this as entertaining as I can. I know going through a lot of these legislative bills and numbers and things gets a little dry. Tonight's presentation, I've tried to capture them based upon the category and the theme of the legislation, as opposed to getting into the weeds too far. And this presentation shouldn't take more than 20 to 25 minutes, and we have a balance of the time to talk about items of interest to council. Let me start by saying I'm happy to be home. Feels good to be back in City Hall. Even though it was a short session, rest assured, it felt like forever. It really did seem like it took a long time. Tonight, we're going to cover a general overview of the General Assembly. This is based upon the assumption that you've been reading in the paper, the updates, as well as your weekly General Assembly reports. This is just trying to cover, if you will, the big themes. Then we'll move into a review of Norfolk's specific legislative requests and priorities. Here, we've distilled it down into, you know, there were several different requests that were asked, but these are the ones that just kinda captured it all. And then I'd like to provide a synthesis of the governor's transportation omnibus. And lastly, we will briefly cover the reconvene slash veto session timeline, and then open it up for questions. In your Dropbox for tonight, so that I didn't have to cover it as much in the presentation, I've got four attachments. One is the council's budget conference letter, asking for the last items to be considered for the budget conference report. We got about a 90% of what we asked for in the budget conference request letter, so I consider that a victory, provided you a pretty lengthy matrix of comparison of the, outlining all the different changes to the biennial budget that's been sent to the governor is now being considered. And then I included a four-page matrix of just legislative bills that were introduced that are relative or relevant to urban cities like ours. And you can see there was a number of bills that actually would have accomplished some of what council's goals were this session, but as you can see, we've captured, there's a lot of kill in there, but there's a few good ones that I wanted to point out that did pass. And in addition to the presentation, I'm going to cover on the governor's omnibus, I give you a two-page, everything you need to know about the transportation omnibus and what it does, and how that impacts the region more specifically. So as you know, the General Assembly adjourned two days early, or a day early, I should say. They wrapped up the budget in breakneck speed, and it was, for the most part, uneventful compared to other General Assembly sessions. The $95 billion biennial spending plan actually spends $1 billion less than the general fund from last year's adopted budget. It eliminates $30 million in state debt. It does not raise any taxes. It restores $30 million in aid to local governments. It provides a 1.5% pay increase in the state share of teachers' pay, and a 2% increase in the salaries of state employees, state police, and university staff that are covered. Norfolk's always keeping an eye on human services and human, you know, those, the impact, our disproportionate concentration of low income. So I wanted to bring to your attention that there was a TANF provision, temporary to needy families, of 2.5% increase that starts in 2016. The General Assembly unfortunately did not include anything to expand Medicaid eligibility as requested by the governor. Instead, they opted to include new funding for free health clinics and programs aimed to help those with severe mental illness. It's never enough, Sarah Wright, but they've made an effort. CHKD also wanted to let you know we're gonna receive $1.4 million in state funding to provide for a federal match, and it also changed legislation so that CHKD could actually be a recipient of some of these other types of supplemental payments. There were several noteworthy transportation bills that were introduced. Most of them were killed, except for two or three, and we're gonna be covering those later in the presentation. There was a regulatory framework established for transportation network companies like Uber and Lyft. I'm happy to report that the majority of local government concerns were actually addressed in the, in the legislation that was passed, dealing with public safety concerns, background checks, insurance provisions, and the like. Before we started session, none of that was addressed, luckily through the partnership of our statewide associations and the different localities banding together and locking arms, we were able to get those necessary improvements. And also, there was ethics bills that were passed that I'm gonna very, very briefly discuss, just so that you're aware of what the governor's considering. Now, on to council's 2015 priorities. As I said, I distilled these down into eight themes or categories of both, that include both requests and priorities. We, this year, were seeking to enhance state accreditation and teacher and student performance assistance, and that captures a lot. That's a really broad topic, but there was a multitude of legislative bills introduced, as well as budget amendments introduced to get at that. Majority did not pass, but some did, and we can get into that a little bit more later. As a priority this session, the administration also continued to embrace or provide advocacy for all legislative bills that we determined to be helpful to our efforts locally, regionally, and statewide to address recurrent flooding and sea level rise. We also worked to advance state support of transportation and mobility, and that's also another general topic, but we'll get into more of the specifics as that relates to us. We worked to support legislation that we felt improved local and regional economic diversification efforts, like enterprise zones, housing trust funds. We even got behind supporting the governor's request to have more monies in the Governor's Opportunity Fund, that we see that as being a viable opportunity for us to pursue funding support from the state through that mechanism. The area that actually consumes a lot of our resources and our time, to the extent possible, was working at this fifth goal, which was to hold us harmless from any additional state cuts to the city operations or Norfolk public schools. I should say that we're held relatively harmless. It wasn't perfect, but in law of averages, we did pretty well as a city compared to what we were facing heading in. Council also prioritized greater state partnership and support for veterans and homelessness programs. And we also articulated, both by letter to the governor directly and to our General Assembly members, our support for a $50 million appropriation to the Stokel Stormwater Local Assistance Fund. Unfortunately, we were only able to secure $5 million, but it's more than nothing, and we'll, we'll take that. And lastly, we asked the General Assembly and the governor to restore state aid to localities. I'm happy to report that we did get funding restored for FY '16, and that means about $1.4 million in state funding that Norfolk will not have to absorb. However, we were unable to identify FY '15 aid to locality, and I believe the manager reported that we're planning to absorb that and not pass it on to constitutional officers as was originally planned. So we'll take half a loaf instead of nothing on that one, but $1.4 million is, I think it's about a penny on our real estate tax is what it equals out to be, so that's, that's real money. Now I'm gonna dive into these eight, several of these areas, not all of them, but things that needed a little bit more explanation. So there were several bills and budget amendments that were introduced to improve school accreditation and student performance. One was, we were able to secure significant changes to the Virginia preschool initiative. This is creating additional VPI slots for Norfolk and preventing formula changes that significantly reduced Norfolk's preschool program. Also, significant but not widely covered is that we actually had this issue referred over to the Joint General Assembly Study Committee studying this particular issue to see what are the benefits gained from preschool and Virginia preschool initiative and, you know, getting kids prepared to start their regular school years, kindergarten and first grade, and how that translates to long-term performance as it relates to accreditation and quality of education performance, et cetera. There also was a bill that was passed to require the Department of Education to develop criteria for professional development of teachers and principals, specifically at unaccredited schools. I'll say that we can take credit for being the locality that first raised this issue with the Secretary of Education, Councilman Sm... and quality of education performance, et cetera. There also was a bill that was passed to require the Department of Education to develop criteria for professional development of teachers and principals, specifically at unaccredited schools. I'll say that we can take credit for being the, the locality that first raised this issue with the Secretary of Education. Councilman Smiga was a part of the delegation that met with her. We provided a series of recommendations, and these were, this was one that shook out of it. It's only a little less than $400,000, but it's actually starting to get at, these unaccredited schools require different types of skill sets, and so there really doesn't seem to be that place to go to plug these teachers in unless it's something that the schools are doing on their own. So, this is going to hopefully promulgate programs in which our teachers can subscribe to these offerings, and hopefully that translates to better performance, not only by the teachers, but by the children. And there is a $1 million appropriation to implement statewide the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program Assessment. So, we're going to start moving in a direction of providing better diagnostics of the kids as they enter kindergarten, to see where they are. And then we have a tracking mechanism to follow them along the way, to really get at what it is that could be done to help them improve their performance. And I'm also happy to report, thanks again to Norfolk raising the question, there's been about $1 million in grant funding provided for both Norfolk and Petersburg to embrace a teacher residency partnership. Now, there's a lot of details to be worked out as far as how that works, but this is going on in Richmond as we speak. They have wide success of finding these eager teachers, starting their professional careers, to provide just that little bit more of an incentive to get them to consider some of these hard-to-fill positions in schools that are struggling. And we want to implement, use this as an opportunity to demonstrate that that's the kind of programs that's going to get the best teachers into our school systems quicker. And the last education-related legislation of note is, we were able to get a funding appropriation for those schools like ours that choose to extend their school years, that there really isn't a funding mechanism in place that allows that to occur. You're allowed to do it, but you have to absorb the cost here. The state is going to take up some of the responsibility for the funding under certain conditions. Being unaccredited is one of the eligible conditions to apply for, for this funding.
Brian, if I could just add to...
Yes, sir.
We had a lot of success with education, mainly because of our partners with VML. I think that has really paid off the relationship and pushing that through. But in addition to these, education, not specific to Norfolk, the commission that the governor formed on SOL reform came out with a lot of recommendations that were actually adopted by the General Assembly, which were bipartisan across the board, one of which is redoing how they accredit schools and giving new names instead of accredited with warning. They've come out with some recommendations that will allow schools that are showing progress to not be called accredited with warning. In addition, they, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, the SOL testing at the high school level, students who score above a certain amount, which is 375, but failed to test, have always been allowed to retest within the same testing window. They have now afforded that opportunity to middle and elementary school students, and so you'll see a dramatic change in accreditation just because of that. Because what happens when a student fails the SOL test? Say they get a 398 on it, which is one question from passing the test. In elementary and middle school now, those students would never have the opportunity to retake the test. But now, what will happen is you'll get back the results, and it will tell the students specifically what they missed. They can go into a room for two weeks, three weeks, get remediated, just specifically on what they're weak in, and then they can go back and retake the test. And if they pass it, the passing score actually overrides the failing score and does not count against the school. And so, with, you think of test anxiety and students going in, you do have students that are very smart and can pass the SOL test, but maybe just miss it by one or two questions, so this will allow them to do it. I think there's a big push from the Elementary School Principals Association and the secondary to try to implement that as early as this testing cycle, but I don't know if they're going to be successful with that or not, because it didn't have a timeline on it, but they were trying to work that out with some of the changes in the language as it goes to the governor, to see if they could do that now. But it is a Pearson testing contract issue, right?
Right. Those are all accurate, Councilman. You got them. As far as division of labor here, the administrate, your administration primarily focused on the formula changes that impacted funding.
Right.
Sure, we're interested in the, you know, those other types of, you know, benefits to, you know, let a kid retake the test right away instead of having to wait. And we're absolutely tracking it, but we didn't, that's one of those, we didn't get to that level.
Right, no, and that's, as I said, just in addition, so I think for us as a district, school district, these, there's a lot of positive things that came out in this year's General Assembly when it comes to education, with the work that was done there, in addition to some other things that the governor had promised that he was going to do, you know, with fixing this mess, so.
As a additional priority, obviously, we continue to work towards the successful advancement of meaningful legislation that will help us to address our recurrent and sea level rise challenges, not only here in Norfolk, but across the region and across the great Commonwealth. There were several bills that were introduced. The ones I want to point out to you is the Commonwealth will be undertaking a study of ground, ground source permits, ground well permits, that if you think about sea level rise in our case, and if it's approximately 50/50, ground subsidence and sea level rise, the subsidence actually, the primary driver of that is the well, the supply of the water underneath. And so, if we can get at identifying where these wells are, the idea is that that helps on the other side of the equation as opposed to just building flood walls, et cetera. Also, I want to point out that we were able to get enhanced real estate disclosure as it relates to flooding of the potential, you know, if you're, if you're getting ready to buy a house, you know, there's going to be additional information available to you so that you can better understand where you reside within the flood zone. But also, we were able to successfully advance a requirement for real estate agents to actually have to be better trained with identifying exactly where they can go to get the information, and they'll have to take an annual certification exam, and a part of that exam will be being able to demonstrate how to get more accurate information as it relates to flooding impacts. Before I move on, there were some bills dealing with living shorelines. Now, we aren't a direct beneficiary of living shorelines legislation. What it does is essentially provides a funding source for private citizens that engage in certain activities to improve upon their shoreline, so there is potential benefit there to our private citizens that are looking to address these issues. Also, before we move off this topic, I just want to reiterate what our Secretary Jones was just saying, and that is, the state as a whole, and I would take license to say as a thanks to the City of Norfolk taking a stand about four years ago, the state is really starting to reorient itself around resiliency, sea level rise, addressing flooding, and you've got the Governor's Climate Change Commission going, you've got Jim Reddick working at the Secure Commonwealth Panel, and we are in our second year of the General Assembly Joint Study Committee on Flooding. All of them are populating additional recommendations. We've got the resiliency, Chief Resiliency Officer identified. My understanding is that there's supposed to be a deputy that's identified to actually take on the responsibilities, that's been delegated to Secretary Moran. And all this is to say that as the state better prepares itself and gets oriented to deal with these issues and to be a better partner with us, we only stand to benefit, and so does our neighbors, and so does all of our friends that's been helping us in that way. Last thing on this topic, we made our best run at the Virginia Coastal Protection Act. Mayor Frame even sent a letter in. This was a bill that would create a funding mechanism for us to tap into for flood mitigation initiatives. This bill died miserably on both sides despite the best efforts we had. It was categorized as a cap-and-trade bill, and I would say it really isn't a cap-and-trade bill, but nevertheless, it didn't pass. However, we did get a referral to the appropriate General Assembly Study Committee to take a look at this as it relates to how localities are able to respond to what we're predicting to be the sea level rise challenges of the next 50 to 100 years. Moving on to transportation and mobility, of course, HB 1887 was the sweeping transportation funding reform bill that is awaiting the governor's approval. Now, this is his omnibus transportation bill. He's probably suggesting a few amendments here or there, but for the most part, the bill is expected to remain intact. Again, I would refer to the two-pageer that I provided to you in your, in your Dropbox if you're interested to know more of the mechanics. I'll just briefly summarize by saying that the most important elements of the bill that you should know about is that it provides additional funding for Hampton Roads through revisions to the highway allocation funding formula. The revisions to the formula is beneficial because it does away with the current practice of discretionary grants for highway funds, and under this new program, Hampton Roads District is now guaranteed its transportation funds, whereas before, there was always, always a question of whether or not those funds would be there, and so now, the state's not going to be allowed to do that. And additionally, the revised formula provides what we feel is a different transparency, that there are different reporting requirements associated with how funds are being expended for transportation so that we can get an accurate gauge as far as whether or not it's complying with the statutes as promulgated. Funds for state of good repair projects will be distributed on a priority ranking system that takes into account many factors, which is, includes costs of deficient bridges, the mileage of, and cost of deficient payment, and current conditions here in Hampton Roads were projected to receive about $35 million in funding for these types of projects. And additionally, construction grants will be provided to each district in proportion to the amount of funds that they received under the old primary-secondary urban formula. One second. So, I'm wrapping up, but under this rule, Hampton Roads is going to get $34.5 million in construction district grants, adding two sources of funding to the Hampton Roads districts, and it will receive approximately 69.5 total, and that's compared to 54.5 under the previous reference model. So, it is a net increase for us. In addition to the increased funding, the bill provides increased Commonwealth Transportation Board independence by eliminating the ability for the governor to remove members except for cause. The bill redirects a portion of the increased funds from other modes of transportation to actually replace aging buses. And so, in this bill, there's about $40 million that's appropriated for transit funding to drop in the bucket based upon the need of what we have, but again, we'll take $40 million versus zero any day of the week. And I wanted to call your specific attention to, given the prioritization of bikes and pedestrian trails, we really hunkered down and tried to get a close collaborative partnership going with the City of Richmond, who expresses the same types of priorities. They have the same issues that we're having of trying to carve out pedestrian, bikes and bike trails within an urban core area that's, that's pretty built out, so we need to have a little bit of a flexibility. And HB 1402 was essentially the last bill that we were able to get any action. There was about five different bills that had accomplished the same kind of theme, but this actually passed the General Assembly, and it also has a referral attached to the Secretary of Transportation to review and make recommendations for improving the funding of bike and pedestrian trails, the maintenance and the minimization of impacts for those communities that are opting to embrace complete streets, you know, these different areas that we've been trying to do, that we, we say that there shouldn't be a penalization for trying to maximize a public, a public asset like our roadways with bike share rows and, and different types of measures. And also, the important, the most important, I would say, at least for HB 1402, is that we actually got light rail to be one of those categories that weren't penalized for roadway maintenance funding. So, this was a concern that was expressed by our neighbors in Virginia Beach about the potential penalization of roadway funding, and so now that, that concern's been removed. And so, by statute now, we expect the governor to sign this. We've addressed that issue, and it's just one less thing for us to have to be concerned about. Oh, and I failed to mention the last bill. So, the one bill that Norfolk pushed with Senator Wagner being our patron was a bill so that we could spend the remaining unspent balances of our urban allocation funding. This money was programmed to be used to underground utility lines and things at the military highway Princess Anne Northampton intersection. The fire chief told us there was a lot of concerns about having those wires up there at such a busy intersection, and so we now have the ability to use that funding. I would say that as HB 1887 was working its way through, the previous draft of the bill actually took out this bill, so we had to go in and specifically identify how this would still maintain intact after the General Assembly finalized its efforts. Moving on to the next topic, regional economic and diversification, and I've got less than five minutes left in my presentation. There were several bills and amendments that were introduced. I know, I'm losing you guys. I'm really losing you guys, but I'm trying. I got a joke, let me sit down. Quickly, there's $4 million appropriated for Virginia Housing Trust Fund. We've got some restoration of the Enterprise Zone Grant Program. Norfolk has demonstrated to be a great subscriber to the Enterprise Zone Grant Program, so obviously, we want it to be enhanced, but I'll tell you that there's more, there's more demand and interest in this program than there's available funds, and so we'll have to continue to work to prioritize with our state leaders that we can continue to meaningfully have this as something that we can contribute into some of the economic decisions that are being made by businesses that might choose to locate here.
So, to make this interesting...
Thank you.
Can you, can you explain the Enterprise Zone? We, we went through this, was it three, was it about three or four years ago when we redid the boundaries and we cut it through? Wasn't funding guaranteed up to a certain point with, when we made those changes? Is that, was it a three- or four-year budget that, because I know they limited how many could apply, and then they only guaranteed that for a certain amount?
That's, that's exactly right. They, this obviously was a statewide issue, and they reduced the number of, the number of areas that would be eligible for, for Enterprise Zone funding, and I believe it was for four years.
But that didn't impact us on that one we did?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, this is more for future, if we were to apply to renew our, that zone, or if we wanted to make changes to it?
The existing boundaries.
Okay. And do we know when that expires? Do we have an idea of when?
Not of exist, not of existing, but I can, we can find that out, but the program itself isn't set to expire, it's just a matter of whether or not you have funding available and you make the application. There's all kinds of ways you can get at this, but at the end of the day, if you're, if you're a business, the reason we like to embrace this, if you're a business and you want to locate in an area that we've identified as, you know, having, having some concerns or, you know, we know how to dial that in pretty well. The problem has been there just isn't enough funding for us to go around to everybody. So, actually Norfolk has been so successful that we're the envy, and so...
There was a workshop at VML conference, I think, on this, and they used us as an example of how it's been successful, but that also meant there were more localities that were finding out about it and were interested in, than possibly applying for it, which hurts our chances later on if we want to renew it. Hopefully not.
Yeah. And then there was almost $1 million for the brownfield restoration fund. I thought that might be significant for our city if we had some brownfields that potentially could benefit. There's not a lot of subscription to brownfields for some reason, so there's $1 million sitting there, Mr. Director of Development, and we can definitely go and see if we can turn around some of these properties that, that might need some remediation. And then again, interestingly enough, most local governments, because we're seeing proof positive in the requests, are supportive of enhanced Governor's Opportunity Funds, that this is like almost a, a, a circuit breaker, if you will, for those types of statewide initiatives in which the state has a vested interest in, in pushing the last bit, the last element into the deal to make it go, we're supportive. The General Assembly actually upped what the governor originally asked by, I think, $100 million. So, there's a lot of money there that it makes good sense to reach out to folks like Secretary Jones to talk about things like convention centers and different things that potentially they could get engaged on. As I said earlier, we did the best that we could on holding ourselves harmless from additional state funding cuts. I mentioned the 1.4 million that was saved. We, chief, maintain HB 599 police funding. Now, it just holds it to FY14, but when we first started session, I went to my first briefing, the proposal was to strike all of HB 599 funding whole, and that would significantly hurt our, our provision of this funding to the Norfolk Police Department. Mostly, I think the chief's using HB 599 funding for technology improvements and that type of thing, and so, level funding, chief, for 15 and 16, and count your blessings. And then...
Brian, is there somewhere reduced on a couple pieces, pieces of paper, the history of 599?
I can get it for you, mayor.
No, I mean, it just seems we have General Assembly members who... No, I mean, it just seems we have General Assembly members who are coming in who were not there when the deal was struck with the urban localities, that they gave up the ability to annex properties or to grow their boundaries in exchange as the statewide economy grew, that we would share in that. And, you know, the first time the economy went in the tank, I guess it was Governor Wilder who ended it, who took on 599 as some sort of, you know, perk. I mean, that was a deal. Somebody needs to keep saying that, guys, this was a deal. And over time, the funding, other communities have managed to work to cities that are not urban, almost unworth the table, trying to get these funds, and it did become a little crazy, but somebody ought to reduce that to, and just provide that to every member of the General Assembly, saying, this is what the deal was, guys. I mean, this wasn't just like another bill, this was a real deal that was struck.
There's a lot of literature on this topic that's available, nobody's pulled it together. The other issue, in addition to the one you mentioned, is at the time, the state was paying for county sheriffs and police, you know, and the cities weren't getting paid at all, so that was part of the issue too. But you're quite right, every year, there seems to have been some gradual degradation of this funding stream, and we started off at significantly higher levels, but at least we held the line. Two, for us, 2 million?
We actually totaled it one year, two years ago. I mean, there were tens of millions of dollars that should have come to us.
Right.
That didn't make it here.
Right. So Mayor, I think that when we go back in time, you will see that if HB 599 funding stayed on the path that it was supposed to stay on, we would have significantly more money than even what we have now.
Millions. And lastly, we briefly mentioned it, but Norfolk was actually looking at about almost 270 or so, if I'm recalling, Virginia preschool slots because of a re-benchmarking effort. We stopped that. It was specifically our effort that stopped that, working in partnership with our state associations, and so those slots are maintained. Let me additionally say what I've already said. We got a referral that this is an issue that the Commonwealth is now going to take up and study further, and we'll actively participate to the extent that we can to show them what we're hearing from our principals, and that is, these kids that are coming from these lower economic status homes that are plugged into the preschool are three, four times better prepared to start the academic rigors of a regular school calendar as compared to kids that don't. Additionally, Council, I know you know this, but there's 600-plus applications pending that we can't fill, you know, we just don't have enough slots for this. So the demand is out there. We believe that the research and analysis demonstrates the value and benefit of preschool, and I believe we'll continue to push on as diligently as we can to enhance state partnership in this regard. There was, this was actually a year to be remembering about veterans. I mean, the General Assembly really took up a lot of legislation dealing with veterans. There was a couple things in there for homelessness. Veterans employment grants are now available, providing incentives to private sector companies to hire veterans. The Virginia Values Veterans Program, I said that it was created, it was previously created, but it's actually funded now, and that there's a funding stream that you can subscribe to. And then there's Hampton Roads Veterans Care Center is actually funded, that's going to be located on the peninsula, but it's a way for the state to enhance medical provisions for veterans. Very quickly, ethics legislation. So there was a lot of ethics-related bills that were being considered by the General Assembly this year. The two that finally passed and were rolled into one bill is HB 2070 and SB 1424, Senate Leader, Senator Tommy Normat. It places a $100 cap on gifts of local government officials specifically to you. So if anybody gives you a gift worth more than $100, you're now required to disclose that, and Breck Daughtry is your person to go to for your disclosures. Food and beverages at widely attended events is not included. Gifts from personal friends of the official also is not included. And travel paid by third parties if it's approved by your COIOA, that's essentially the city manager, as long as it's, you know, business-related. And your travel paid for a local official's government agency is not considered a gift. So if you're participating in VML and there's a conference that's occurring that requires you to stay overnight, that's not considered a gift, that's considered normal duties. So this, these laws become effective January 1st, 2016, which is a little bit different. Most of the times, laws are enacted for July 1 of that year. The governor, I just checked, he hasn't signed this yet, so I understand that there are several amendments that's being suggested, and he'll have to decide. So now we're moving into reconvene, we are in reconvene veto session. The governor's considering a host of bills, and he has four choices from the bills that have passed the General Assembly, have been sent to him. He can sign and approve it, and it's deemed approved. He can return the bill to the General Assembly with amendments to be considered during the reconvene session, which is on April 15th, and he can veto or not approve. And that requires two-thirds of the both chambers to override the governor, and he could also take no action. He could just not do anything with it, and most of the times, if the governor doesn't take action, the General Assembly will pass the bill. That's how it's done. So the General Assembly, what can they do with the bills that the governor's considering? They can accept the governor's amendments, they can reject his amendments, they can override it with a veto, as I said, and they do have the authority to pass those bills that they sent to the governor, and the governor didn't take any action. Again, laws become effective for 2015, July 1st, except for the one ethics bill, and that's the end. 25 minutes exactly, no applause is necessary. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, that's my joke.
Does the administration have any questions?
Great job, Brian.
Brian, nicely done. And off getting aside, great job.
Thank you, sir.
Really, when you walk the halls of the General Assembly building, Brian, people come running out of their offices to tell him a joke, laugh, you know, and to ask him what he thinks, and, you know, it's really, it's a good experience. Proud of him.
Brian, I'd like to thank you too. I know my bill may not have been the most important, but I know it was passed because of your extra work on it.
Thank you, man. It was unfortunate. I'm a big bike enthusiast, so I have to disclose my bias. I'm really into bicycle pedestrian trails legislation.
Thank you.
Plastic bags almost made it, Darryl. The plastic bags almost made it.
Plastic bags.
That would be a perfect issue for resilient cities.
RBI.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to present a brief overview of our youth sports program with a special emphasis on the RBI program. That's Reviving Baseball in the Inner City. There we go. And it's been a while since I've been up here. All right. By the numbers, if we take a look at each of our youth league sports, we have football, basketball, indoor soccer, RBI baseball, and softball. And AAU track is a new program offering that we plan on offering this spring. Each year and each season, our numbers have continued to grow. That's with every sport, with football, basketball, indoor soccer, RBI baseball, and softball. We don't have the 2015 numbers yet for baseball because the season hasn't started, and AAU track, again, is a new program offering. Outdoor soccer, seven years ago, we didn't even have an outdoor soccer league or indoor soccer league. So now, actually in 2015, we'll be starting our third season, and then we'll have the numbers for that then.
Did Tom, I coached an indoor team?
Oh, yeah, and he did a fabulous job.
No, I didn't. Indoor soccer's a lot different than outdoor soccer. That's all I gotta say. It's a different sport.
Our Reviving Baseball in the Inner City League, baseball program, we teach a couple of things. Fundamentals, every coach should know the fundamentals and aspects of the game to introduce kids to the game of baseball. Sportsmanship, whether you win or lose, you want to make sure you win or lose graciously. Fair play, making sure you understand the rules, you treat each other with respect. Teamwork, which is very important, knowing that basically, as you go through life, you have to work on teams, and that gives you an early basis on how to do that. Competition, enjoying competition and getting the best out of yourself. Citizenship, making sure that you actually can get along with others, and that's actually socialization. And academics, we're asking all of our coaches now to basically check their players' grades to make sure that they're doing well in school. We have great partners, Norfolk Police Department, Chief Goldsmith, your officers coaching our leagues, they provide cookouts for the kids. Not only that, they work for our pitch-hit-and-run program as well. Norfolk State University and Coach Claudell Clark has been outstanding. They provide clinics for our coaches and our players, provide free tickets to Norfolk State University games, and the Norfolk Tides do the same thing, we're providing free tickets to Tide games as well. We did receive grant funds in the amount of $22,000, and that'll be used to expand our RBI programs, our league this year, to enhance it. Also, we'll be requesting funding to use to incorporate for expanding our leagues to other Hampton Roads cities. We're looked at as the hub for RBI, so we're already meeting with the City of Suffolk and with Hampton to look at some inner-city league play for our kids this season. Funding will actually help also with equipment, and also to look at some of the field conditions that we currently play on.
Are you still at Barrow, I mean, you were playing there, right? Where are you playing now, Darryl?
Actually, in Norfolk, we play at Barrow Park, Terrleton, and Fairlon. Some of our success stories, Norfolk RBI, we were invited by Major League Baseball, one of our teams that attended Junior RBI Classic in New York City. That was part of All-Star Weekend this past season. The kids not only participated in a tournament, but they actually got a chance to actually be hosted with all the All-Star activities, and they had a great time, 11 players attended, and they were very happy, and they got a chance to meet a lot of Major League Baseball Some additional success stories, Junior RBI team traveled to Prince George's County, they participated in the Major League Baseball RBI Regional Tournament. Just last year, we started sending teams that actually qualified to go to RBI Regional Tournaments. In addition to playing four games, they got a chance to see the Washington Nationals play, and they spent a day at Six Flags, so they had a great time. Our next steps, we want to actually implement girls softball, that's going to be part of the 22K, and we want to implement a volleyball program, and again, track and field will be coming this spring. I see Lori smiling, volleyball. Any questions?
I just had something. When we talk about the academics part of it, what would really be interesting, you said about the coaches checking on the scholars, report cards, and things like that, what would be really interesting is that if we could possibly have after practice, a tutorial-type after-school program for the athletes? Maybe we could look into that, Mr. Manager, to see if, and I think that it would make a difference if we could help the children with their homework. I mean, I know they have a very long day, but they're still required to do that homework, and if we had people on site who could actually help them, I think we could see a better push for their grades going up as well, along with the athletics that come along with it.
Councilwoman Johnson, I think that's sort of in place, because a lot of our athletic associations and leagues play near recreation centers, and we have after-school programs. So our coaches can actually take them into the centers if they actually cut off a little bit of practice time, so they can get some mentorship and tutorial sessions. So I think that's not a problem, we can do that.
Okay, good. And as far as the ones that are not close to a recreation facility?
Well, what we do then is we encourage our coaches to go by the schools, and that's something a lot of our coaches have really done, to talk to teachers, and actually, they can get reports. And again, a lot of the coaches, these coaches are remarkable, because coaches follow these kids from football to basketball to soccer to baseball, and a lot of the training that actually comes, usually comes from that coach's backyard, and a lot of times, they have their kids over at their own homes. And a lot of that, not only is not just coaching the sport, but actually teaching as well and helping with some of their academic studies.
Mr. Riddickis?
Yeah. What neighborhoods do you have RBI?
Actually, we have RBI programs in Berkeley, we have RBI programs, we have a team in Huntersville, we have teams from East Ocean View, where that fringe is a little bit on Little Lake, we serve the Fairlon area, and actually, we have a gamut of kids. We actually pull kids from every inner-city pocket of the city, and we have kids that actually come from some portions of Ghent, so, sorry, that's almost every pocket.
You know, when my son was playing baseball, I was, you know, I was not pleased with RBI. He was always playing out at Fairlon, and uniforms and things of that nature, you know, were not available.
That's right.
And so, you know, I really would like, you know, once the season starts up, I'd like to see, no, I'd like to see a schedule. I'd like to see a schedule when they're playing, where they're playing, and things like that. My concern that I have, and didn't have anything to do with RBI, is the number of sports that we have for girls, you know, during the league season. What do we have for girls during, let's say, during basketball season? Do we have a girls' basketball league?
We did. Actually, the girls now play with the guys, but we want to branch out, because we have a lot of young ladies that after middle school age are playing high school ball, graduate from ball, and we want to start a spring women's basketball league. So that's something we have in the works as well. Again, volleyball will help, and track and field.
You know, Title IX requires that these universities have the same number of sports for girls as they do for boys, and I think that we need to put a great, just as greater emphasis on a local level as well. You know, after 4:30, 5 o'clock, we need to make sure that our girls are in structure. Nobody says anything about teenage pregnancy anymore and sexually transmitted diseases, and I think that we need to put a greater emphasis on our girls as well, to make sure that they have a wholesome opportunity to, you know, to enjoy their lives without being pregnant or sexually transmitted diseases. And I think we need to put, you know, as far as swimming is concerned, we have a couple of different places that have swimming pools, and so I think we need to make a concerted effort for track and field, and anything that we can do as far as youngsters are concerned, girls in particular, girls particularly, to make sure that they have just as much of opportunity as we do for boys. One of the things that somebody had mentioned to me that was similar to what Councilwoman Johnson was saying is that, let's say, for instance, if a team was supposed to start practicing at 4 o'clock, they get out of school at 2:10 or something like that, that they're required to go somewhere and study. And this is something that's beyond your scope, because it was something that it would have to come from the school district. And I know that, you know, the demanding schedule for baseball and football on these youngsters, and when they get home, they're wiped out. So somehow, we have to make sure that they have an opportunity to study, because the coaches, sometimes I wonder if the coaches actually realize that they are students, because, you know, they put too much of a demand on these youngsters. You go to a baseball game, you know, you have to leave, I don't know how much, earlier now, because of where teams play. And then after the game, we lose a draw, the coach will take them over in the corner and kill another 40 minutes, you know? So I think if somehow it was required that these student athletes study prior to going to these games and things of that nature, that we'll have better results. You know, our school district is floundering, you know, in a lot of areas, and so I think we have to put this combination together to make sure that we have student athletes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Darryl. Yes, just a couple of questions. And one, there were a lot of girls that played indoor soccer. They're really good. Paul?
I'm glad.
My little daughter out there gets some of those girls, they're getting crushed. The memory of understanding with the school system?
Yes.
How's that going? And you can be honest, if you're talking to us.
Well, it's improved. I would say each year, it's gotten better. More and more doors are starting to open. It was rough probably about four or five years ago, but it's getting better.
Okay. And are there any areas that there could be some improvement on?
Well, I mean, there are still some schools that practice site-based management, and I'm hoping that maybe the administration can help open those doors up for us, because there are places where we don't have adequate recreational facilities, and those school facilities need to be open for recreational use.
Okay. And then, Ron, this may go to you, the baseball fields down in Ocean View that will eventually be where the new school will go have lights, can those be recycled to other...
Well, I mean, there are still some schools that practice site-based management, and I'm hoping that maybe the administration can help open those doors up for us, because there are places where we don't have adequate recreational facilities, and those school facilities need to be open for recreational use.
Okay. And then, and I don't, Ron, this may go to you, the baseball fields down in Ocean View that will eventually be where the new school will go have lights, can those be recycled to other areas of the city that may need lights, or are they being planned for the new baseball facility, or is that being included in the agreement with Ballard? Because there, there actually, and I know Councilman Riddick has brought up the absence of lights at some of our ball fields, and I don't know if those can be reused, because they look like they're newer and in good shape.
Lights are not part of the PBA contract at this time, but it's one of those items that we have on a, on a list to consider.
Okay. But if it ends up being provided by Ballard, then let's make sure when they're doing the demo of the fields over on that side, that they save those lights, and either they can be used for fields, I know Norview High School's, they don't have any lights there on their fields, I think Gramby's missing some, or some of our other fields throughout the city, if they can be used instead of just knocked over and destroyed.
Council speaking, the only thing I have caution on, the candle wattage and the footage and those lights have changed over the years, so the standards would have to be looked at for those lights.
Right, yeah. They look fairly new. I don't know if, when they were put in, but they, they could be used.
Yeah. But to, you know, to add to that, I don't think any of our baseball, maybe one of them, Barod Park, but when it's time to play fall ball in baseball, our teams always had to be the visitor.
That's right.
Because we don't have, we don't have lights.
Right.
So, you know, somehow we need to kind of put that on the radar screen and, and just see, we can take our time and put lights up.
Sure.
Start with Gramby.
Yes, sir.
One thing I mentioned again during my State of the City, the Harbor Park boxing facility, maybe in a few weeks we could get another presentation in the year on the progress of that.
Okay.
Because that has an academic, as well.
It does.
Which is really important, and this could really be another joke for us to chat about.
Yeah.
Could you just give us some numbers about how many kids do you normally get in the RBI program?
I can go back to...
Did you show it to us?
RBI baseball, this last season was 360 youth.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Thank you all.
Welcome back. It's been a long time.
That's smart, stay away from Mrs. Turner.
Capitol Hall. Who's going to handle this? Mr. Turner?
I, I can start it, and I probably will start at the end, but you're familiar with the Temple Hall rezoning, you passed it in June of last year to convert institutional to residential. There were opponents of that zoning and, and a referendum and litigation, and recently, after you had discussed repealing the residential and returning it to the institutional, the preservationist asked that, asked through me that you not take that action, but delay it, and Mr. De Schills with the homeowners this afternoon reported that they are, if they don't already have an agreement, that they are so close, they're joining in a request for you to continue PH 8, 8A, and 8B, which address the repeal of the residential zoning, so that I think that you'll be asked by both sides of this question to continue it tonight to March the 24th.
Okay. And this is somewhat unusual, but we have a representative here from the diocese, as well as the purchasers and the, I guess, the preservation group as well. Understanding is to continue the matter until 24th? Is that what, is that the preferred action tonight?
Yes.
Okay, Jay, just to update, we do have a sign.
Okay, we're glad to do that, you know, we just wanted to get out of the middle.
You do have a signed agreement?
Okay. Hey, do you have a sign?
Okay. Well, great. Okay, then we'll, unless, is there any questions about the council? I mean, that's what we'll do.
Other than Craig.
Yeah, 24th. Okay. Great. You guys want to have a kumbaya moment here?
No, no.
Okay, and we're going to go with a closing.
The municipal council assembly votes being on March 10, 2015, at 6:37 PM, the Central Conference, we set out a clause 3 to section 2.3, that's 3711, the Community Administration Act, that is discussed of the acquisition of real property for public purpose in the area of Poplar Hall. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigal?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?